Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business will be a public hearing on Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District operating in capital cost budget for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. As required under Chapter 71 of the general laws amended in 1972 by the addition of Section 38N, the school committee of each city or town or regional district shall hold a public hearing on its proposed budget after publication of a notice therefore in the newspaper having general circulation in such city, town, or district, to which hearing may be from time to time be adjourned. All interested persons shall be given the opportunity to hear for or against the whole or any part of the proposed budget. Therefore, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law and as advertised in the Standard Times on April 20th, 2025, this is a public hearing for the proposed Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District operating cost budget for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. Does any interested party wish to be heard for or against any part of the proposed budget? Hearing on the first time. We'll ask again, does anyone, any interested party wish to be heard for or against whole and part of the proposed budget? Okay, hearing of seeing nothing. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so moved. Next, we have a public hearing on school choice for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026. As required into the Massachusetts School Choice Law contained in the Education Reform Acts of 1993, the school committee of each city, town, or regional district shall hold a public hearing on school choice for publication of a notice thereof in a newspaper having general circulation in such city, town, or district to which such hearing may from time to time be adjourned. All interested persons shall be given the opportunity to be heard for or against school choice. Therefore, in accordance with Massachusetts school laws and as advertised in the Standard Times on April 20th, 2025, this is a public hearing for school choice for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. Does any interested party wish to be heard for or against school choice? Okay, we'll ask again, does any interested party wish to be heard for or against school choice? All right, hearing nothing. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close? Is that a... Okay, with a second? Okay. Motion with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so moved.
Do you have to vote on... Do you vote on...
We'll be doing that later.
Okay. Yeah, it is later. Thank you, Mike. I was questioning that as you said. And I have to pay for it. All right. Next, if we could have the roll call, Ms. Fredette?
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Bencourt?
Yeah.
Mr. Shay?
Here.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yeah.
Dr. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
All right, this is a regular meeting of the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School held on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the student forum. Do we have any public comment this evening? Okay, there is no public comment. Under new business, this will be for the adoption of the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School operating in capital's cost budget for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. And we have the appropriate motions to be made. Anyone would care to make the first motion?
I'll make that. I move that the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee adopts the final operating in capital cost budget commencing July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 in the amount of... Sorry, I bring my glasses. Fifty-four million, eight-hundred-ninety-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety. Please note that this amount includes $400,000 for B and D. And then, in voting approval of the budget, you are voting to authorize transfer of that amount into the FY '26 capital renovations line.
Again. Okay, we have a motion with a second. Any questions? Okay, seeing the hearing none. All those in favor?
I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul, please.
I just have a question on the...
I'm sorry, Paul. Yes.
Continue. You have a question?
What's the balance in it? Is it just going to be the $400,000 that's going into the...
That's all that's going in for me and Dee, yes.
It's in there now?
So we're taking $400,000 out of the stabilization account?
Indeed.
From E and D into the operating budget, and then we have a line item?
Sure, too. Just into the line item of the $7,000?
So there's a line item. How much is in that line item? It's $1 million?
$1,005?
Yeah, yeah, give or take.
Okay. All right. Are you going into like a capital stabilization fund?
No, no, it's going directly in. I know where he's focused right now. I gotta be ready for that, too. That number better than me.
Anyone else have a question on the budget before we vote? Okay, so we have a motion with a second. All those in favor for approval?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Anyone care to make the second motion?
I move to approve the treasurer's certification on April 29th, 2025, assessments levied in accordance with provisions of Section 8 of Chapter 428, Acts of 1971, amended by Chapter 769, Acts of 1972, upon the city of New Bedford and the towns of Dartmouth and Fairhaven for the 12-month operating in capital cost budget from July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026 for the Greater New Bedford Regional Vocational Technical High School District as follows. Dartmouth, $6,419,230. New Bedford, $6,401,337.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? Any questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, hold on one second. What was it?
The Dartmouth number is the $6,409, and the New Bedford number... Dartmouth is $6,401, and New Bedford is $6,419.
Okay.
So it's backwards?
Yes.
$401,337.
So Dartmouth is $6,401,337. Fairhaven is $2,631,268. And New Bedford is $6,419,230.
Part of my motion, can I amend that correction, please? So amended with the correction? Yes. And Ms. Fredette has the accurate figures? Okay. All right, so we'll vote, motion with a second with the amended figures noted. Anything else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Next, we... An item B will be a vote to approve the updated job descriptions, including your packets. We have humanities administrator, STEM administrator, unit freshman student life, strategic initiatives administrator, lead teacher academic, and lead teacher CBT. And I will yield to...
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. So in your packets, as you know, part of the reorganization of the district's administrative structure this year includes some revised job descriptions for members of the GNBAU. Those job descriptions are consolidated in your packet for approval this evening. It does include the creation of a lead teacher and academics as we consolidate academic department heads, as well as the CTE administrative lead teacher will be updated as well. I will be meeting with the GNBAU leadership team next month to talk with them about that process as well. All of this, I just want to say this earlier, I'll say it again, all of this involves a reassignment of existing administrators within the district to new roles. And I will be issuing those reassignments in the next seven days and advising the school committee of those changes very shortly. Thank you.
When will they take effect?
They will not take effect until July 1st. Yep, all those appointment letters will be effective July 1st.
Yes. I just want to make a comment. I think this is a really efficient use of the staffing pattern. I think the structure is where we talked about getting in the last three years. And I believe this is kind of the last leg of that.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you, Ms. Bencourt. Yes, this is kind of the final leg of the reorganization we started several years ago and we consolidated to a one principal model. I'm sure there'll be tweaks around the edges, but this is the last substantive move that we envision as we implement the strategic plan we approved last summer over the next five years. So I want to thank again the committee for their ongoing support through this process. I know that is difficult. I know that there'll be feedback and, you know, implementation questions that arise. And you folks have been steadfast, as have the district leadership team in its implementation. So I'm grateful for everybody's support through that process. Thank you.
Any other comments from the committee? Prepare to vote. So we are requesting, request is for approval if someone would like to make a motion. Motion for that effect?
Second.
Okay, motion with a second. If there's no further questions, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so moved. Under item C, in accordance with the public hearing we just held, this will be a vote for or against school choice for the 2025-26 school year. Changes in the school choice law contained in the Education Reform Acts of 1993 presume that each school committee will admit non-resident students under the choice program unless there is a vote to the contrary by June 1st of each year. And motion is... Oh, yes.
I'll make a motion to vote not to participate in school choice for the '25-26 school year due to being oversubscribed by the students from within the district.
Second.
Do you have a question as well, Ms. Rivera?
No.
Okay, that was...
Sorry.
No, that's okay. All right, so we have a motion on the floor with a second. Any further questions? Okay, hearing of seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So moved. Item D will be a vacation day carryover policy review, including your backup materials, a copy of the vacation day carryover policy, and proposed options for discussion and your consideration. Yield to Superintendent...
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. So as you may remember, during the COVID pandemic, the committee approved the extension of vacation days beyond the allotted numbers, both in the employee handbook work time as well as in the individual employment contracts of non-union members. Since then, in the collective bargaining agreements, specifically in Unit C, we've agreed to 15 vacation days to carry over. Several employees within the district, despite their best efforts to do so, given the operational demands, are still above the caps that were originally set into place in 2020. That was scheduled to lapse in June of 2025. And so I wanted to bring this to your attention. I'm not asking the committee for action tonight on that, but I wanted to give you the information. I mentioned this to the chair. I think there are a few options. I personally don't feel like folks should lose that time. It was a very stressful time in 2020 and 2021 in particular, where vacation time was very difficult to use. And I'll speak for myself, but also for members of our team. You know, they were here pretty much every day for that. I don't think I took any vacation days in the 2020-2021 school year. So at least not in the summer. And that made it a very difficult time for us to be able to catch up. We also have some Unit C members who've been here a long time and get four or five weeks vacation every year as well, who are also caught in this situation, and now maybe even more so because they're limited to 15 days. I think our number is 50. So there's a little bit of a difference there. I, so far, every year that I've been in place here, I have approved the carryover of those vacation days for any employee with the notation every year. I need you to try your best to continue to use all the time that you've earned without, you know, impacting operational efficiencies of the district. In my opinion, folks have done that to the best of their ability, but we're now coming up against the June 30th, 2025. And so I think, I mentioned this to the chair, that the committee really has, in my opinion, I hope, two viable options. Number one, they can choose to punt this to some date in the future, 2026, 2027, 2028, whatever number that the committee thinks is appropriate. Or two, if directed, I've had Pam run some back down work on how do we get everybody to their appropriate levels and compensate them for those days that are beyond that scope. And we would provide that information to you in advance of the next meeting, so you'd have that number in your packets to consider as well. But I wanted to float it and take questions tonight that my hope is that the committee can take this issue up either at its May or June meeting, unless it's prepared to do something today, so that we're able to act before the end of the school year. I can answer any questions that members might have.
So we'll open that up to the committee. If you have further questions, we can at least discuss it tonight.
When you do the balances for C, because back in '20, they would have had 15, and you would have carried over 15.
Some had more than 15, right?
Yeah.
Most... I mean, I wasn't here, so if I wasn't here in '20, and I had 15 days and I didn't use them, and then the following year I get another 15, my balance is 30.
Correct.
It would be understanding that I would use that time at some point. So what I'd like to know is like, what's their max that they could carry for Unit C?
Yeah.
Where they started, where they are now.
Yeah.
That'll give you the... Like, how much have they really been using?
Yeah, we can absolutely provide, any employee on the list that Pam's already created, we could provide you with what they've used. We're happy. It's full transparency with the committee.
I just want to see if they've made an effort.
Yeah, I... So folks have made an effort. Folks have absolutely made an effort. I, you know, in the letter, and I could provide samples of the letters I've sent every year as well, which is basically like a, you know, because the first day was the problem. They had 15 in the bank, let's say. They earned 20 or 25, but we didn't... We needed people here in the summer of 2020 in particular to try to figure out how we were going to be able to manage this. So they might have had 35 days. Maybe they used 10. They get down to 25, but then we got to 21, and they started racking the 20 up again. So now they were using their regular four weeks, maybe a fifth week, but never really able to get away at that, right?
And it's difficult because those people don't only work 10 months, right?
That's right. They're full year, right?
They work school year.
No, vacation accrueers are full-year employees. We don't have any school year folks that are earning vacation time. That are of concern. I mean, I guess we compensate TAs in Unit B with vacation, but that's all ironed out every fiscal year. The issue is really maintenance and custodial, Teamsters, Unit C, and non-union administrators, full-year non-unit administrators.
I'm not inclined, I mean, they may, but I'm not inclined to increase it up to 70 days because that's three months of vacation time.
I know.
If you take a week off, it's not an unfunded liability.
I agree with you.
So with this, you're growing an unfunded liability.
Yes. I said...
I'm inclined to increase the number. I would choose to hold the 50, extend it another year, and use it or lose it.
Should go along with that. I know some of us are old enough in a local town that has superintendent at the 200 and more days. And that was a storm that nobody wants to face. And I think, as you mentioned, you know, I think there has to be some type of a cap where, you know, even if you don't use it, I hate to see them lose it, but you've got to find time next year or somebody had to use it because you just can't keep adding 20 on.
No.
So I want to mention that. I don't have the answer except the fact that I think we'll be kind to do it, but some of these people may have to say, you've got to take a day off a week in the next month or so because you're getting too dangerous in that high level. Because that's going to hit the... You know what I'm referring to. I don't know if Diamond... As a business manager, you don't... There's a limit there, so...
I agree.
So I think we have to be aware that there's going to be eventually. And even if they say, well, I couldn't use it, then you may have to lose that. So just...
The other option would be, what about buying out?
That's...
Getting the figures on that, but I was going to ask like the... Because I hate to see people just lose it.
Here's the thing. Here's, and again, it's not my vote, which is why I'm presenting this to you, right? So I absolutely agree with what Paul and Mike have said, right? The unfunded liability is what worries me. For example, I'll use myself, I'll talk about myself, so I don't talk about anybody else. Every day is worth more July 1st, right? So it doesn't make sense for the district to allow folks to carry those numbers because they become more expensive for every employee with a district every single year. So I agree with that. My worry about the extension, and I'm happy to execute that and direct the staff, is it could impact operational efficiency. For example, if I tell the business administrator she needs to take one day off every week for the entire year, right? That's what we're looking at in order for some of us to get below that number. So I just threw out there, is the committee willing to entertain buying out some of those extra days right now so we get them off the books before June 30th and keep the caps at the 50 days it currently is in '15 for the other employees?
See what the members will say.
Sure.
We can get those two figures later.
We can get that information.
And then the cost of those days. I think that'd be helpful to...
I just want you to have all that information. And either way...
The cost, I mean, that would be...
Maybe we're too generous with the vacation time.
And that may be, too.
We'll see Mike all of next year.
You'll see me. I mean, it is what it is.
Sure is.
It's just grocery shop, Paul.
I think that was some of the brief conversation we had as well, is, you know, some of the COVID stuff is going to come to an end.
Yep.
So you've got to put a cap on it. I think the question is how we go about it. You know, do we buy out some, use some, buy it all?
Combination of the...
Yeah, combination of the two. But I think it sounds like, you know, everybody is kind of on the same page that it needs to start to wind down and get back to some normalcy. I mean, we're already in 2025, and, you know...
Still talking about COVID.
If you kick it down the road, you know, even two, three years, it just doesn't make a lot of sense.
I will also push all Unit C, Teamsters, and non-union folks in this category to enter into the frontline system, their anticipated vacation time between now and June 30th, so that we get a very reflective number of what would be left on the books by June 30th. That way, you know, because there's definitely time in the last week and a half that folks can use earned time to try to get that number down before June 30th. But I just wanted to kind of float that out there tonight and let you know that we'll get you all that information for the next meeting.
I think some people might, you know, their time is valuable to them. They'd rather use the time.
Sure.
Be paid for it. So if they can find a way to do it...
Yep.
It doesn't hurt the district, then that's an option. All right, anyone else like to be heard on that topic? So I think, I mean, it sounds like you're in agreement that we'll table this until we have additional information. All right, next will be accept and acknowledge of the award of the KNBVT main lobby wall bid. The backup materials is a copy of communication informing of the bid award.
I want to wrap one thing, I'm sorry. So there were two bids received, and I apologize that you did not receive that copy with the letter. I didn't anticipate for this to be on this meeting. I anticipated it to be on the May meeting, and I wasn't here last week for the vacation. I was using some time. We received two bids, one being the Collins Construction Company. That was the low bid at $219,124 for the base wall project, and the alternate of columns being $234,321 for a total of $453,445. The second bid was South Coast Construction with a base bid wall of $262,191 and the alternative columns of $215,979 totaling $478,170. So Collins being the low bidder, including the alternates, was selected as the construction company for the project.
Can you just, I don't know if, I might have missed it. The scope of the work, like basically what...
The main foyer lobby, when you walk in, the wall that goes from the floor all the way to the ceiling at the two entrances of the auditorium.
Okay.
That wall there is going to be constructed with wood and have all of the shop names listed on it, including a new projection screen to advertise and announce activities throughout the building for the students.
The highest is going to pull...
Give us one minute, we'll get a picture up on there, what it will look like.
I mean, that was my question, too. It was okay.
Yeah, I saw the...
Did I miss that? You know...
What are we awarding?
If we can get the materials and they can get it all done in time...
One of the things...
It's an expensive wall.
I'll add, I'll add to it. Part of it is...
Even if we didn't do the alternate...
An LED screen is going to be on the... The projector that's currently, it's been there forever, is getting very expensive to repair.
Will it be a projector anymore?
Will not be a projector. It'll be LED like the new screen we have out in the fieldhouse.
It'll award, because right now we are in conversation as far as material, if they can receive in time.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead. That's what the front would... Hopefully it...
That's what $200,000 gets you.
The technology. Is the technology separate?
Separate.
Separate. Separate bit. That screen is like the one... That screen is like the, if you've seen the mobile one that we've used a little bit in the, in the fieldhouse. So it's an LED light screen.
271 inches diagonal. It'll be the same size as what we have out there.
So that's what it will look like when it's done on the other side. The columns will be on the side, you know, kind of the beams going up, too.
So entrances, both sides into the...
Yeah, won't affect the entrance.
Won't affect the entrance.
Nice.
It's going to be pretty.
Now I feel better spending the money.
Is that all the shops that are on there?
Every shop is on there.
So what happens when we change shops?
They're interchanging.
They come out.
You can change it.
And they can be replicated easy enough, like to match?
The names are not on the panel.
The placard.
They're put on the panel, but it's not actually on the actual panel.
So the panel stays?
The panel stays, and the names could come on and off depending if shops change, name changes of shop programs. Yes, the names are removable.
That's worth it.
That's going to be there for a while. Do we need to, a motion to accept the...
A motion on the base in option? I mean, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, okay.
Because your one's to change, and then the option is another $200,000 on top of that.
We should, yeah, we should take a motion.
That's all dependent on what Pam says.
Yeah. We're working with the vendors, the delays. We may get the materials and then have to hold, we're still trying to work through that. Because I don't, if we get the materials sometime in August, September, we're not going to be able to do that while school starts. Because a lot of heavy machinery and things, we might get the materials and then find a way to store the materials and then move when we can. That, that might happen. We're not there yet. We don't know.
You know, a lot of storage areas, too.
Yeah, well, and it may, it may require some offsite storage. It's a lot that's still to be determined. It really depends on when the materials are going to arrive, and we just don't know that yet.
So is there... So if you want a motion, would it be the motion to award the base bid to Collins Construction and give you the option to exercise?
That's right, the authorization.
Alternate?
Yeah. I think that would work.
Okay.
Except the acknowledgement, right?
I think that it's perfectly fine if the committee accepts, if the committee accepts the bid and authorizes us to act on its behalf.
On the option.
On that option, that would absolutely work.
On the alternate.
We're not awarding it, we're just accepting the...
You're acknowledging receipt of it.
The bid award.
You're acknowledging the bid award and authorizing the district administration to act. However you want to work. I mean, our plan is going to be to try to make this happen one way or the other. We are concerned, I want to be upfront, we are concerned about the timing of materials. And we did have some conversation today. I was in Everett today, but I did speak to Zeb about, you know, Pam had an idea of purchasing the materials right now while we have the funds to do so, and then looking at storage opportunities to be able to deploy that. If we can't get it done before school starts, then we would have to wait probably until the end of the next school year to complete that. Because we're not going to be able to do a two- to three-week project during the school year, right? It's just too much noise, too much distraction, too much equipment in the foyer that would be safe for kids. So it may be something that we have to wait on, but...
They may not hold their price for a year.
That's where we're still, we're in that conversation with them, yeah. That's where we're, we're still, we're in that conversation with them, yep. We don't know that, yet.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the, accept and acknowledge the award going to Collins Construction Company. Do we have a second? Okay, Mike, I'm going to share you a second. Any further discussion on it? Okay, hearing seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? It's so moved. And just under information on the capital improvement plan for fiscal 2026?
Yeah, at the request of Member Kitchen, we tried to put together a capital improvement plan that encompassed a lot of the projects around the strategic vision that we're looking at. Obviously, this far exceeds the total cost of 1.5 million. We are prioritizing different programs within this in an effort to continue our upkeep of the vision of the obstruction needs of the district. So we tried to list as many things that are on the radar right now as possible. Obviously, we're going to do as many as we possibly can in the next year. We do not envision completing the entire list for obvious reasons. The amount of money expected exceeds available revenue. But I wanted folks to be able to see at least what we were thinking about and some of the things that we will be doing. Certainly willing to, and if not tonight, at any point in the future, entertain any questions that the committee has about any of these projects.
Any other notes from the committee? Well, we do have a student representative here. Is anything you'd like to share? I know, not specifically on the agenda, but certainly like to acknowledge you.
I'm sorry. No, I actually kind of had a long report because I'd missed the last meeting. So I don't know if I shared today.
You know if you were prepared for that, so no, go ahead.
Yeah, no, actually. Okay, so I'll start back in like March a little bit. So the class of 2027, the sophomores had a dine-in fundraiser at Cask and Pig with people night on March 18. And then a few days after, Mr. Voc Tech was hosted on Friday, March 21. And as a host of that night, it was like, it was amazing and successful night. And we all made many memories. And the winner of Mr. Voc Tech was Vinilson Andrade, and the winner of People's Choice was Joe Costa. And then in April, we had our spring spirit week. Division one had theirs April 4th, 7th, and 8th. And Division two had theirs the 9th, 10th, 11th. Following with our, oh, the themes for that was dress as Adam Sandler, dress as your favorite music artist, and Minions Day. Following that, we had our Spring Fling and Miss Voc Tech. It was hosted on the Saturday, April 10, and the theme was Masquerade. And actually, Mr. Voc Tech, Vinilson, he got to DJ the dance and show off his talent to the rest of the members in the school. And the winner of Miss Voc Tech was Kiwi Lopes, and the winner of People's Choice was Alyssa Levitri, and they were both announced that night as well. And then something a little different, the Division two AP Literature Class hosted a Scottish play, Macbeth, on April 15 in the auditorium from 9:45 to 10:45. And I set invites to administrators and teachers, and every seat in the auditorium was filled. We even had kids sitting on the floor, teachers standing around, and it was just amazing. And we really enjoyed putting on the play to like inform and entertain the school with Shakespeare's work. And our feedback from teachers and students is positive. So it was like a nice thing that we did. And then before vacation, we had our multicultural week celebration from Monday, April 14 to Thursday, April 17. On Monday, we had like a live DJ, a 360 photo booth, and community resource tables. The next day, we have, we had live art experience with multicultural painters. And then on Wednesday, we had an African drumming performance. And then our last day, we had a school-wide assembly featuring Wapinawg singers and dancers. And then over spring break, the travel club went to Portugal from April 17 to 26. And I went on the trip with them, and it was, it was fantastic. Although we experienced like multiple seasons of weather, it was a hell of a trip.
Cold in Lisbon, huh?
No, it was Porto, the northern cities. It was like raining, it was like hurricane. And then we went more southern, and it was just like 90s, like Florida. It was, we experienced both sides, but it was absolutely amazing. We met new people, we created like close bonds and lots and lots of memories. And I just want to acknowledge these three teachers, Ms. Harrison, Ms. Haggerty, and Mr. Gonzalez. And they did really a fantastic job making sure all the students were safe and together and enjoyed their time, also learning a lot about the Portugal's history and culture. And then I'll wrap this up with the class of 2025. We had quite a few amount of fundraisers with Costa's Kitchen Restaurant every Thursday from April 17 to May 8, and Tequita La Raza Restaurant from every Wednesday in April. We had a Japoli dine-in on April 26,